Right. Okay, we are back. Thank you for holding online. We're moving on to Grabhorn Park. We have a discussion going to be led by Director Dave Sukow and City Manager Dave Sukow.
I'm Mayor Council, thanks. As always with me, this is a discussion that I'm in anytime you have questions. I think we can be far more productive that way. All of you, obviously, I'm off script. Obviously, all of you are aware of Grabhorn Parcel. And is we've been working diligently, Unity's been working diligently with the Ad Hoc Committee and the Parks Committee, and everybody's got a lot of passion investment in this. We wanted to move forward, but now we're at the financial challenge side of that. What do we do for next steps? The end of this, I'm just looking for some direction from you guys to how you want us to move forward. If you want us to move forward, there's obviously several options that I gave you there, so we can come up with any combination of that that you would choose. You want me to go through the history of the property or anything, or what's a good juncture? I know we've been here long and I don't want to keep you guys all night, so. Any point? Did everybody read the staff report?
Yes.
So where we're at right now, in a nutshell, is the property is owned by the city. Problem there, we've paid for the preliminary designs. You've got preliminary design that the Parks Committee was okay with. It will be in the master plan that will be coming before you next month. It's not set in stone that that's what we're building, but that kind of met everybody's needs as far as sports courts and future soccer, baseball, whatever that ends up looking like in phase two. The next steps for us would be to, we move forward, go to final design. That cost would be somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars. We've got one quote right now, I think for like ninety-eight, give or take. We would probably do an RFP to reach out, get other engineering firms looking at that. But at this, we just reached out to the design engineer that took us this far, just to see what the next steps would cost. I'll go to the financial side of things here. So as most of you probably know, there were wetlands identified and going through the process of the Ad Hoc Committee. Unfortunately, if you look on the last page of my presentation, that's the rendering made for the park. Right at the front of it, there is wetlands that has to be addressed to even move into that portion. The property itself can be used as long as you don't impact the wetlands. We can do other things, but unfortunately, this is right where access road or parking lot or something. So to do that, we've already worked with wetland consultant. We would be facing a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in mitigation fees. That's set by state. We don't have any variation in that. We could look at using some of our other properties, but we haven't explored that deep enough to know if we want to sacrifice other land to mitigate this. Right now, we're just doing the cash option. Options are to look at. And then, you know, there's been talk of dialing this back, but with the parking lot and the wetlands there, I don't know what that would look like, so we can have some dialogue there. The other thing, let's see, going back to finances, we did get an engineer's estimate to build the rendering that's in the master plan, and that is hovering at well over three million dollars, three and a half, whatever it was. Right now, in our budget, in the SDCs, we have two hundred and twenty-five, give or take. And we have the fifty thousand that we budgeted for in the main parks budget for the savings plan. We've only done that one year, so right now, that's all there is. So there's about two seventy-five to do that. So if we were to move forward, we would literally pay the hundred thousand to design, the wetland mitigation, and that's where we would pause. Anything beyond that would be dependent on grant or debt. The grant is an option. It's available for the two more years, has to be within six years of the purchase date, so we could get into next fiscal year and still apply for that. There was a push for this fiscal year, just because if, if we weren't awarded, it would give us one more round applying. That all? Okay. So that loan or that grant could be up to a million dollars is our maximum award right now. Forty percent match. We could clearly qualify for a lot of money. I don't, my experience, I've never actually applied for one of these. Alex was good at that. Doesn't sound like people ever applied for the maximum ask or were awarded that. So there's no guarantee that we could get the full. So once again, that leads to, to try to accomplish what's in this plan would require two plus million dollars in debt and still not get to the final desire. There was a desire for baseball fields or a true soccer field. None of that's even factored in. That's additional money over and beyond what's presented here. This is just to get us a level grass field, sport courts, parking lot and a trail along. Lot of stuff real quick. Where would you like me to?
Well, the one question I'm starting to come up to is, yes, the matching land purchase grant expires next year, but we will still be putting a lot into this, that we will have matching money no matter where we are. I mean.
That is correct. That is definitely a variable. Moving forward, let's just say hypothetically, you decided, let's, let's sit on this for five years. We lose that, that grant, the match, like Mayor said. But we would be saving and we would be coming up with our cash match later, that we would still apply to that, I would assume, million dollar eligibility in the future with the forty percent match. We could come up with eight hundred thousand for the percentage there. Then we could still reapply and still be eligible that, because they're not going to award you two grants on the same park. So it's a one-shot deal regardless of when we do it. Even if we won now, it would be funding the rest of it out of our pocket moving forward. It's not the end of the world, the curve is a little bit, people that have, want to term that. It's just really how you guys want to move forward. The other thing I do want to point out is I did a little quick math, I think, Jeanette, you mentioned this. What would that look like if we took on the debt? So I just did a quick math at five percent. I don't even know if that's where we would be. It could be higher than that. But that would equate to about a two hundred thousand dollar a year payment on debt for twenty years. Right now, we're only budgeting fifty thousand dollars a year towards building parks, so we would fall short there. And in SDCs, we haven't captured there enough. And so right now, our current SDC is a touch over twenty-five hundred dollars per home. So you would have to average almost a hundred new homes coming into this city every year to pay for that in SDC.
Without, without a loan?
Not alone.
And right now, we have about a hundred to a hundred and twenty houses kind of out there. That's only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
For one year, and then once that happens, and likely we're going to pause, because we don't have that kind of growth on the horizon. And we don't even know we have enough real estate available, to be honest. I haven't even got that. We probably don't even have.
Could be a combination of both, but still.
I mean, it still comes nowhere. We're, it's still tight, given a few.
Yeah, I had a question. And so, I mean, I was looking at, it's like super expensive. Is there like three J consulting? I'm guessing this is the best lowest price that you got quote or?
I want, okay, I do want to throw that in there. These are engineers estimate. No certainty, until you go out to a bid to an actual contractor, you don't know what that's going to be. I will tell you, and I think most of you know this, things are over budget, never under budget. So I assume they're probably pretty close. They've been monitoring the market. Our city engineer looked through these numbers and felt like they were pretty good. He actually, a meeting with them to discuss it. He, our engineer thought that these were low. He thought these were very conservative.
You're saying seventy-five hundred dollars for, is it a manhole cover or what goes underneath as well?
Twenty-five dollars?
No, it's seventy-five hundred dollars.
Be per manhole. That would get you the entire.
Not just the top, it's the whole thing. Okay.
It's a. About seventy-five dollars for the top.
And, and also, and my concern is that cost goes up every year. And so we've seen them twenty-five, thirty percent construction costs, so there's no guarantee that we can have, this next year can be thirty percent more.
Could be. I don't think you're seeing thirty percent trends annually anymore. When COVID hit and there was a shortage on materials, it was a big jump. I feel like that's a lot of, quite a bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have something?
My only question, I mean, the thing I'm looking at is a phased schedule, like if. I don't think you'd get a million dollars. I think we got five hundred thousand dollars on Veterans Park, if I remember back in the day. I had to present for that one. But let's say, I mean, can you do the parking lot and the trail? And apply for the grant and, but not do the rest, or with the grant, do you have to have it pleaded? Do you have to show them the whole plan?
The grant wants to know that you're bringing a true asset to your, there's a real deliverable in their money. They investing wisely in you. One of those stipulations is they usually like to see restroom facility. This plan, that restroom is in, up by the sports courts. Want to be closest to your primary amenities, which was up. And that's, that's due to constraints of the site. That was the floodplain issues we're dealing with, slopes of the land, where we could build some retaining walls. We identified that that upper portion is the premium portion of the parcel. Down in the floodplain could go underwater, and do you really want your structure there?
What was the plan with the house that's there to be demolished?
Yes, ultimately, yes.
You could put a bathroom on there? Um, yeah, that, that's what, that's what I was thinking. I mean, if, can you, can you dig out the ground, you know, level it out, let it grow grass? Side, you know, that first parking lot and trail and get the grant, you build it, there's, kids can play there. You can put a ultimate frisbee, disc golf or whatever, you can, T-ball would love to have grass, soccer can run around. But if, if that isn't really even feasible, then I don't see taking on.
Glad you mentioned that, because that's where I was going next. Obviously, this is the dream. We can do lots of other things. There were renderings of disc golf. We could use this as green space. You know, you, a lot of expenses here is leveling this. If we don't level it, I would, I would suggest we could piece mill it. Trail along the creek, Reach F Project will be going this summer. Scappus Bay Watershed is moving forward, doing the layback. So at the conclusion of this, um, likely in the next spring because of planting purposes, it will look a lot like it does in Veterans Park. That will continue through our entire parcel. At the conclusion of that, once the excavation is done, we could look at building the sidewalk. Just paying for it out of pocket. Our public works crews even have the means and methods to build sidewalks. So we could look at building that and just kind of work our way to it. The other thing that we could look at is, you guys have the drawing available right in front of the house. There's a portion of the parking lot that is not wetland impacted. We could look at paying cash for a small parking lot, that half of the lot, and just factor it into the future design. And then at some point, when we're ready, we build the rest of the lot, we deal with the wetlands, and then build the access road and just keep working our way in.
Yeah, because we're not going to do anything. It's nice to have a parking lot for people to go and play there. Or just run it around.
I mean, a small parking lot is a nominal expense. We could maybe build that shooting from the hip for a hundred. Sure, that, build a trail, and then we could just throw golf baskets. I mean, since I came on here, I'm passionate. I really would love to see disc golf somewhere on this town. Anyway, so we could use it for that until some later date where we want to bring in the excavation and grade it and build. Maybe the whole concept changes. Maybe something develops within the city and we come across another parcel. Future is wide open for us, so.
Yes, yes. About the wetland. So Dave, if the city were to identify a piece of already city-owned land that we were willing to trade, would we gain that, would we gain that back? And would the cost still be one seventy-seven no matter what?
The one seventy-seven is if you do cash mitigation. Now, you can mitigate within your own properties, and we've done some preliminary work on Cathead. You would sacrifice Cathead to do that. Didn't, I don't want to dive too deep into that, because it's so preliminary that I don't want to give false hopes. But that is an option to talk about in the future.
So layperson for me, for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, they'll let you come in and just put dirt in there and bring it, level it up to however you need it.
You basically have to.
What you basically have done is you've taken that and you've invested your money in mitigating on somebody else's property. Later wherever, so you're just buying.
And if you go make a wetland somewhere else, then you can get rid of this wetland, if it's on our own property versus pay the money.
It's one to, it's pretty much one to one is the formula, my.
Acres?
No, so.
Oh, it depends, it depends on the types. It depends how you're mitigating.
You can't, yeah, you either pay for it or you have to give it up in your property as wetland, so.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Dave, I just have two questions. So these estimates, are these as of December one, twenty twenty-three, or October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Between, to be honest with you. They really are. That was when, when the engineer provided that, but it's been revised since then, and I don't think they updated the date. If you, if you look at this, December one, I mean, that's the most current revision.
Yeah, going back to your comments, it seems like we really need to focus on locking in the design, in a design that allows us to do things in phases so that we can at least do something and get rolling, because we've been talking about this for how long now? So I, even if it's just a, I don't know, an open field and we start doing sidewalks, but some, some sort of phase plan that allows something that's usable with each phase, we need some sort of wins here, in my, my opinion, because we've just had this for too long and not been able to really do.
Don't disagree. I just didn't want to have staff make a decision to exhaust almost all of our budgets. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars of our budget, not have any other money to move forward to some new place structures or other things that we really need to be looking at, so.
I have a question. So the timber property that the city owns, is that for investment purposes or is that for other purposes? For example, like right there at Dutch Canyon Auto Miller?
That is technically owned by the water department. The revenues from that go to the water fund.
Okay.
And, and quite honestly, that's a discussion coming up too, is that, you know, we're building a reservoir three million, three and a half million short right now on funding that. We're, we're independent. I'm working on trying to that resolve and come to you with that as well.
Does that mean harvesting some of those trees or?
So we have one stand that is eligible for harvesting. That, that is exactly what's, right now, we haven't had the staff time to pursue the logging of it, but as a payback for that loan, yeah, that is a viable option for part of it. It won't fund all of it. You know, Rainier owns like three hundred and some acres up off a near city. Maybe we can tap that.
I understand you guys have a lot of projects going on too, so doing anything the rest of this year. If we were to try for a grant in April, you would, you guys are pretty strapped on, on other projects.
We are. The thing about it though is if you're not going for the gusto, I ask for the grant, because you have exhausted on a small dollar amount.
That's what I'm thinking for this year is, is let's decide that maybe nothing for this April cycle, and then we can start looking later in the year of, if maybe next year, if there is something by then, and maybe look. I don't want to leave this park untouched, unused for the next year, though. I want to be able to do something on it. Not expensive or.
Following on Council Miller's recommendation, that, that's a viable thing, that we could look at moving forward with the design, which would give you the footprint of the access road, the parking lot. Like I said, maybe a lower portion of the lot, we just build that, knowing that when the extension comes, laid the groundwork to build off of, and you're not tearing it out to start over.
If you built a small parking lot and a trail, there's still enough room for excavators to get in there later and do work. It's Council Jacob.
Yes, thank you. So Dave, thank you for this. So I have a question, just so I make sure I'm tracking. Uh, one of the things that I recall in our conversations is sort of like the infrastructure work that needed to be done, that benefits the city holistically, that is tied into this plan. So are we saying that if we were to say, yep, we're good with this design, let's take incremental steps? What happens to that infrastructure piece, which I think is the public road and access driveway improvements? I think that's in the budget. Like, are we going to start working on that or are we not?
What would happen in the short term is the objects you're referring to would still move forward. So water and wastewater would be paying for these two lines going through there. The water isn't as dire as this, as it's explained. I don't know the timing. The, the construction of that water main may be when the park gets built, which in some ways could make that cost a little more. Because you've already mobilized the contractor. They're, they're working, so they can do everything all in one. So I guess I'm going to say that's a to be determined, because if I could package it in, we would get a better deal. But if time just doesn't get us where we need to be and we're ready to move forward with that sewer project.
Yeah. Okay.
We would still use this alignment, because this alignment makes.
Okay.
So that's not in the construction at all, though, the water.
Actually, in, since we're just kind of chit-chatting here about that. So the Smith Road Pump Station is moving forward right now. We're going to go to construction this summer. We are working with that design to line up for a future sewer main under the creek and bridge, to clean up EJ Smith, because that bridge is in. Someday. It's not going to last forever. We're realigning right now our sewer from the station so that we're ready for that next. So we kind of build sequentially from the pump.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? By looking at these options, does anybody have any thoughts?
Are we, sorry, are we comfortable, it sounds like we take option C off? Anyone discuss that option?
No, thank you.
Okay.
No, it's between A and B.
Uh, there's an option D on the next.
That's right, option D.
For an ideal, sorry.
So, oh, I did have a question on option D. So how much more money would it cost for option D?
B?
D.
Depends on what you redesign.
Utilize more economical amenities and reevaluate.
On baseball team, it'd be a lot.
It depends how involved we get.
So we'd have to take this back to the Parks and Rec group with the Ad Hoc Committee and go that whole route?
You don't have to.
If you're going to deviate from their recommendations of amenities.
Yeah. Sure.
Along those lines, if it's just how you're going to build them, but you're still providing what the Ad Hoc and.
Yeah.
I'd say probably not. What I would encourage, obviously, I mean, as you're working through that process, you could come to them and say, here's where we're at. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
I don't think at the end of the day, what I heard them say is what they want to.
Yeah.
Necessarily how they got there. Other than, obviously, everybody knows there was a clear desire to not have the road pushed.
Right. Got it. Okay.
That's the only thing. We did in terms with the Parks Committee about public safety, and that's why in that plan, you'll see that there is an access road through the parking lot to at least get people evacuated. In the event of an emergency, we can get them through, but not in a regular fashion.
Right.
And you could use portable toilet, if you did a parking lot in the trail, you could put a portable toilet of some sort or a vault.
Right now, we put two down at Javon, I think. So that's.
Okay. So to clarify, so would option, uh, I guess it would be, I guess, E in the sense, because not that we're going to be going with option C, but we'll be using this model that we have here, and then in a sense, kind of do a work in partials, like in, is that what we're discussing? Sorry.
I think I heard you say B?
Well, no, so what I'm saying is, is actually is giving the, is it E another option?
Making up another option.
E is whatever we just come up with.
Right. And so that's what I'm hearing. If we're taking the design that it is right now and kind of breaking it down into sections that would, you know, into partial, or sections that you were saying, is that where you were?
What I'm hearing you all say is option B, where we go ahead and get this thing designed, and then we figure out how we can fit it in. When we're, when we're truly ready with the match and everything for the grant.
Okay, and your final design would be this design, not redesigned?
Much.
In general, yes.
Okay.
But keep in mind that this is like a ten percent construction. Things might shift.
I personally like the plan. I mean, maybe a little change, but I do, I think it gives what we need. But I would like, yeah, if we do B, can we look over the course of the year and look at the parking lot, even if it's gravel and look at the trail? Look at those are, those little options that we can get some access to it now. Wouldn't affect.
gravel, public.
Okay, pavement.
Be acceptable for, you know, we're, we fall under the same criteria that we expect others to have to put in. Not hearing me? Sorry, I was wondering about that. So, yeah, you would kind of have to build, right, reduced. Although I will say, um, the other thing you guys can consider is how important are those fields? Because that's your expensive thing too. You know, if, if you decided you didn't want the soccer field and you definitely didn't want a baseball field, you could pull those sports courts downfield closer to the bottom. You, that does open up some different.
Can you put the sports court in the floodplain or in the, probably not in the floodplain?
I don't think you'd bring them that far, but you would bring them down closer to that lower parking lot.
But would that be B? Would you have to, or would that be?
That's where we're moving into the new design.
Yeah.
That's D.
It's from you.
Yes.
I'm a hard no on spending any more money on this project in terms of redesigning, engineering, any of that. I mean, we just had a lengthy conversation about prioritizing public safety in the police department, and I think it's a hard discussion to have, you know, frivolously spending money on parks that we don't have. And so I think we need to stay within our means, pay with cash, plug along as we go. I don't know if that looks like this plan or not. But I, I just think we need to move on, invite people to that space. I'm all in favor for throwing out some disc golf. People can run around in there. It's going to look great along the, the riverbed there with the watershed, but I mean, I just, it's a hard thing to swallow that we would then put a bunch of money into an amenity like this. So I would like to stay within our means, but move forward as we can.
So do nothing at this time, but B and C and D are all on the table still at a later time.
Well, and I'd, I'd point out about the grant, you know, Dave touched on it, right? You got to have the gusto, right? The closer we can get.
We have nothing to.
Not, not on that property now.
Yeah.
But in a couple of years, if you make these incremental things and you get, and you go out with a grant and say, look, this is going to get us over the, over the finish line. Your grant will give us this, and you show them, that's a lot more compelling than what we would be presenting right now.
I just say with all the work that you guys have put in and the parks has put in, and then we're just saying hold, but it, it probably truly is the best thing right at this moment.
Not saying we're not, we're not holding. Nothing's not going to happen. Something will happen. It's just, we're not investing into.
It's more like strategically building towards.
Dave is great at that. He can see what we have. He just said, we have the ability to put in sidewalks or whatever. You do that everywhere here, and I think that that's a great approach to this park.
I've actually heard, she's more A versus B, because once you do the final design, that is some work, that is some money, that is.
We might have it later, but we don't have it now.
Is wetland mitigation part of B when you do final design?
Well, wetland mitigation, yeah, any, anytime you encroach into that area, we have to address, however that looks. So when you're ready to build, west side of it, have to address.
Okay. I think we've got a little bit of confusion up here, as you're probably sensing. In order to phase this, do we need to go with option B? Or what option is in our interest to phase it in?
To be strictly responsible, as we're all working on.
Yep.
You need to design the parking lot, or should, don't need to. You should design the lower parking lot in a way that you can build a part of it, and that design matches X space.
Okay.
So every, the parking lot, as you see it around the house, or some version of that. There was a rendering too, where it actually didn't go along the road. It kind of came into the property. So we need to get that designed in a way that works for.
Can you do that or does you need?
We would have to hire somebody. We, we don't have the means yet.
B is going to cost money. It's going to do a final design, and then we can make changes if needed potentially, but.
The other thing I just want to bring your attention is the master plan is coming before you for adoption very soon, which has a lot of information to help the city move forward in planning. Visible to just wait for that document and see what those findings are to come up with a strategic plan, because you may see a lot of opportunities for other improvements that are expensive. Veterans Park is going to be in need of a new place structure early soon, and thinking about, those aren't cheap.
Are you thinking about the Parks and Rec plan or just fifty years? Which master plan are you talking about?
Parks master.
We should see it next meeting. So I'm, I mean, I'm leaning towards A at this time. Let, let's see the Parks Master Plan, and we can revisit this anytime after that and decide if we do want them to finalize the design or. Forward. Is that?
Can I get a vote on that?
Yeah, but I mean.
There is an approval and motion.
It's fine if I, I also want to, that's your feeling too.
I'm, I'm completely okay with that. I just, my biggest thing is I don't want to see the city take on debt for a park. I just don't think that's good business, in my opinion. I like to pay cash for everything we can and.
I guess I'm looking for a motion for any of those options.
I have a.
Do you like to speak? Can you do it this microphone though, so they can hear online?
Say your name in the city.
Darlene Marquardt, and I live in Scappus. I heard you talking about a baseball area and a soccer area. Have you thought of all going to those organizations and asking them if they would donate to make those things happen? Because I, I know a little bit about the soccer anyway, and it seems like. I know a little bit about the soccer anyway, and it seems like they have monies. That they could possibly donate to have a soccer field done and baseball, because they've taken quite a bit of money when kids register. Play those sports and maybe they have money where they could donate to have a baseball field done. It's a thought.
Speaking for them, but yes, they will.
I am speaking for them.
Well, literally, we gave eighty thousand dollars to the city when they built veterans to help with the dugouts and stuff. So I know they are willing. I just don't, can't commit them to it, but.
No, exactly.
Amount of money I think they have though isn't millions.
I, I will say that they have been brought to the table and getting to this level many times, actually. Um, there's no commitment as we, the future's uncertain at this point. They have been involved in the discussions.
So.
I got the date.
Is there a motion?
Well, I have a question. Um, I just, uh, so when you're, if we choose A, would that be do nothing for? What period?
Until we see the master plan.
Until we see the master plan.
Until. So.
So tomorrow.
When the master plan's adopted, I'll be coming back to you and we'll be talking about some priorities of the projects that are in there. We'll, we'll come up with a strategic plan moving forward. Whether those are little projects that we've spread across the city, or if we wanna look at another big one. Or maybe after looking at the master plan, you decide you really wanna reinvest in this. There's. Countless opportunities and we'll have lots of discussions. This isn't.
So basically, let's move this to another discussion. Just push, pass it on.
Got it. Okay.
More direction.
Okay.
Really, I mean, what I'm looking for is do you want me to get a design going or not at this point? Because I don't, I didn't wanna.
Not today.
Yes. Make a motion to. For option A, do nothing at this time and use the parcel as an open space park.
Motion to option A, do nothing at this time and use the parcels and open space park. Counselor Friends, any second.
I'd like to amend that a little bit. I mean, just, uh, I guess until we see the master plan, I guess we can just have a discussion after that. Because to me, it sounds like we're not gonna do anything. No.
When the master plan's done.
Yeah.
Maybe the following meeting or something.
Right.
I, I could have drafted that. I could have. Re, reevaluated the completion of the master plan. I'm just throwing things.
Andrew, reset it.
So Counselor Friends, make some motion of option A, do nothing this time and use the park as an open space. So, um. Evaluate the master plan.
Next second.
Second, by Counselor Santiago. Any discussion, question? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those. Question carries. All right. Thank you very much. Calendar to read.
Comments?
Planning Commission meeting Thursday. February eighth, seven PM. EDC meeting noon, February fifteenth, followed by Parks and Rec at six PM. City offices are closed on Monday, February nineteenth. We have an urban renewal agency meeting, February twentieth at six PM, followed by council meeting at seven PM. And we do have our appreciation dinner for committee members, uh, six PM, February twenty eighth. Okay, uh, city manager, acting city manager, Dave Sukow, any comments?
Uh, just a couple. I just wanna thank you all for trusting me with this honor of being in from even though it's for only nine or 10 days, whatever. But, um, it's been fun. Hopefully I brought some value. I know I corrected a few contracts and saw some stuff, so. Um, and then department reports, I, there was mentioned that some of you liked the way certain formats were. Um, that was brought to staff's attention upon Alex's departure. Uh, in reading through it, I see exactly what you're talking about. So I'll work with Larry to kind of get everybody on the same format, just. It's easier for you guys. That's it. Great to see all the passion in the community tonight.
Nice to see, uh, Lieutenant Fwellen.
All right. Thank you for having me here. And I know it was a very difficult decision, but thank you for considering public safety and just doing the best for the community. So it does not, uh, strike me as something that's a easy decision, but, uh, thank you police thinking about that. And I'll be here tomorrow morning and. I'm gonna work again, so. Here. So thank you, guys.
You on Highway thirty about eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Counselor Jacobs.
Um, thank you to everyone who came out tonight. Um, I. I love it when there's people here and we can have a dialogue. Uh, thank you to, uh, staff. Thank you, Dave, for sitting in. Um, and. Thank you, you lieutenant, for being here and for, for being professional. Uh, throughout the course of this conversation and dialogue that we've been having, I really do appreciate you and. And how you show up to this difficult conversation. Um, and thank you to Counselor Holmes and Counselor Miller for exploring this difficult conversation and leading through this with, with courage. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Prince.
Yeah, thank you, Lieutenant and the police department for doing, it's very clear seeing the community come out and voice their support view that. You guys do a lot of great things out there and you have, you have a lot of support. So, uh, um. Thank you to the community members that came out as well.
Thank you. Counselor Home.
Uh, yeah, just to go and echo, thank you everyone for your time. Um, if we'd put in all this work and nobody cared, that would really have been the disappointing thing, huh? So I'm glad y'all are here. Um, I did attend the League of Oregon Cities meeting, as I mentioned, in Bay City. They have a quarterly meeting. The next meeting will actually be the president's meeting and it will be held in St. Helens. I believe it's May sixth. It is usually over lunchtime between like eleven to one, but, um, I think there'll be a good turnout and it is such a great opportunity to get together with. Other counselors, mayors, city managers, people from the planning commission at, um, other communities that are dealing with very, very similar. Um, issues and challenges and opportunities as us. So I would encourage. Those of you to mark your calendar and take advantage of it. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Miller.
Uh, so where do I start? Um, Chris, thank you, um, for being here and answering the questions and yeah, difficult conversation. I am looking forward to, uh, having a side by side to see what it would take to bring our PD up. And that, uh, that was always on our radar at, you know, phase two, I think, to. Um, you know, do a side by side, but I do really think that it's important to have two on duty, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. And I do mean patrol in the city limits. Um, having done the job for six years and not having cover and working in rural county and making arrests when you're by yourself. It was a big no-no and I don't have to tell you, it's for obvious reasons. Uh, use of force goes up, liability goes up when you're a solo officer trying to effect an arrest. Um, it is not safe. Um, so it is, uh, my expectation that this council worked to try to figure out how we get twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five coverage. On duty patrol inside city limits. Um, and great if it's a, if it's keeping the current model. Um, but we do need to do this exercise and see what both options look like. It's part of due diligence. Um, and hopefully we can find a, a way, um, to keep it as is and be able to afford it to, but we do need to make it happen. Thank you.
I like just to echo what all my fellow counselors are saying. Thank you all for the, uh, for the community for showing up today and. And all of the testimonies were very informative, so I do appreciate that. I'm also, um, for the two officers and I was having a discussion with my fellow counselor. And I think it's also for safety and I was thinking if I was the spouse of a police officer. Um, that I would prefer and that would be one of my things that to choose between. This police department and the other police department, knowing that they're getting paid the same, I would want my spouse to be safe and. Meaning that I would like them or he or she to be, to have backup. So that's why I would think having two officers. Um, on duty would be, uh, also a retention. Officers as well. So, uh, hopefully we can get there and it seems like the community is really, um, for that. And hopefully when it does come to coming up with the cost, that we do get the support from the community as well. And I do want to create a strong, uh, police department and we can, I'm looking forward to exploring what that looks like. Whether we keep it in or not, but. Well, we try to do best for, for our, um, police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel President Grayson.
Um, in regards to the police discussion, I'm very grateful that the next step is to look at what we currently have. It sounds like we need to do, um, an internal reflection on our budgeting and how we can tighten that up. And actually use, uh, the funds that we're allotting towards the PD and how we can, um. You know, compensate in a better way, et cetera. I think that we have a big task coming up with, um, our bargaining coming up. Um, I wish that we had looked internally before we looked to the sheriff's department. I think unfortunately, we've. Set the tone in our community and with our police department that. Um, it might look like, uh, they're not doing a good job or we don't care about them, um, et cetera. And, um, that's hard to take back. So, um, unfortunately, phase two is now happening now, but I'm glad that it is. I, um, it's not a surprise based upon my questions. I'm very against, um. Contracting with the sheriff's department, like Counselor, um, LaFren said, there was not enough evidence there to show. Um, if it's finances, that is not evident there at all. Um, and again, I think that we need to hear from the voices of the people that currently are doing the job and that voice has not been heard yet. So I'm hopeful that that voice will be tapped into in the future. Um, I'm grateful to the, um, Scappus Rural Fire District for partnering with the Scappus School District during this January term. To teach our students about, um, fire protection and that industry and really promote, um. That trade and having our students, um, potentially go to school and learn how to do it and serve our own community here in Scappus. I know that the PD once was involved with, you know, the, that kind of a cadet program or early, you know, high school learners. And I think that would be a great lofty goal to have, but I'm really, really grateful for the, the fire district taking that, that on. Um, I think one component that we've really missed in the police discussion is, um, the potential of our lieutenant. And his ability to work himself up in the ranks and the mentorship that we have in terms of the opportunity with Brian Jensen. Uh, unfortunately, he was on and off tonight. Um. But he, he has a willingness and the ability as, um, Counselor Holmes and Counselor Miller. Touched on his accolades last meeting, he comes with a plethora of, of knowledge and experience. And if we can keep him here for some time, which he's willing to do, I think. We can really rebuild internally and get to a really great place. And, uh, that's, that's my goal for a police department. Thank you, Dave. I did lean on you a couple of times in the last nine days and you did an excellent job. So if you ever feel like you wanna do something in the future, I think you, no, just joking. You're way better public works director. That's where we want you. Um, all right, here we go. Mayor Backus. Like to submit, oh, actually, that is a lie. I have to submit a letter to you. Um, I am writing to inform you of my resignation from my position on the Scappus City Council effective the twentieth of February, twenty twenty-four. Following the city council meeting. Per the requirements of ORS two four seven point zero three five, I will no longer be able to meet the condition of living within city limits. It's truly been an honor to serve on the council and represent our community for the last seven years. I would like to express my gratitude for the opportunities I have had while serving on city council. It has truly been a privilege to work alongside our dedicated staff members over the years. I commend my fellow counselors, past and present, for their commitment to improving the quality of life in our city. This position is certainly one that requires an abundance of responsibility. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Scappus. Please know that I am willing and able to support you and the council in any capacity moving forward. I wish you all the best as you move through this, once again, transition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate. Done? Okay.
Done.
First wanna thank Megan for her service. I will do this more next meeting, but I really appreciate your help. Um, you've been a tremendous help this last year. Um, I wanna thank all the people that came and spoke tonight. Really good to see that community involvement. I've been pushing that all year. Um, in, in every aspect, I'd like to see more involvement with our city. Um, if nothing else, I hope you got, you heard how positive all the comments that people said about our local police. And I think you guys should be very proud of the people that we have there. Um, both online, it's been constantly good. Um, haven't heard one issue. So I think that's, you should be very proud of that. And it's been a long meeting, so meeting adjourned.